Today is Tuesday, October fifteenth. It is now six twenty-one P M. Town Council meeting, Town Council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, West Waller Road.
Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Luchardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared. Introduction of new I T director.
So I didn't physically see him. He's, uh, we made a job offer and he's accepted. Jeffrey Fernet. He is the current I T director for the town of Hoppington. We look forward to him coming on board. He should be starting probably next week. And I've offered him the opportunity to do a gradual onboarding process. So he doesn't leave his current employer hanging with some significant projects. But we look forward to, um, he has some, some heavy lifts coming for cybersecurity and dot gov domains and a few other civic and projects that we need to tackle before the end of this calendar year. So we're looking forward to having him on board.
Tough introduction if you're not here.
We watched the last few meetings.
He's watched, he's, he knows.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the October first, twenty twenty-four town council meeting.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Move second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinances, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, amending section two, general purposes, section three definitions, section four division into districts, section five use regulations, section eighteen, power of the town council to establish a zoning board review and adopt zoning ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second.
I'm on, I'm here, I'm here.
That's been to that in Florida.
That's, uh, that's the ordinance that brings our zoning code in line with the two thousand twenty-three legislative changes.
Any questions for Al? This is the second reading. Any public comment on this? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading, reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, amending chapter eleven, motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation, adding section fifty-three penalties for violations to the code of ordinances of the town of West.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
That establishes, that establishes a one hundred dollar penalty for each violation.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a rate, roll call vote. Chase?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending chapter eleven, motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation, section forty-seven, motor vehicle restricted routes, and appendix C traffic ordinances, one way on inclusion lane.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second.
There's a street, there's a street with no name between Maine and Manchester. The manager looked into it. They've included naming it Inclusion Way. And the manager and the traffic committee and, uh, Major Ketchum feel it should be one way street. And that's what this ordinance does.
So you're all familiar that we've made a significant investment and the construction is ongoing at the Crumpin Playground. There is a street that appears to be a driveway on the south side of the property that goes between Main Street and Manchester. There's just one garage facility on that street. We're looking to make that a one-way with angled parking to accommodate additional cars at the playground and make it more safe. We learned that the road was never named. So constant with consultation with Councilman Luchardi and our theme of that park and the nearby fishing pier, we thought it would be appropriate to name it Inclusion Lane, which has been approved by-
Which way is the one way, gonna go towards Maine or back?
From Main Street into Manchester.
So just, just clarif- clarification, it's where the fence is at the end of the park to that garage that's there? That's the road you're talking about?
Past the park coming from this direction.
Let me ask you this because I kinda knew previous owner to that building. And did anybody check his deed? Because if that's surveyed, that might be his property.
It was, this was Boyer, Mark Boyer checked it and reported back to us.
Because the way, the way it was put to me when he owned the property was, um, he owned to the fence, almost to the fence. I just wanna, you know, that was going back eight years ago, probably about eight years ago. Cause that was, a person used to work for me.
We'll double check it, but this is the first reading, so I'll, I'll verify. I have the maps upstairs as well.
When was, when did Mark Boyer check that? That had to be recent, right?
Couple of months ago when I started the process.
Okay. So it's only fitting, Inclusion Lane is only fitting too because the fishing pier and it's part, a lot of my fault too with the fishing pier is we should have put signage there off Main Street a long time ago. People have asked me about it. We just didn't do it. But it's really, the whole piece is inclusion. So that's something that Mark and I have talked about too, about putting a sign on Main Street with this whole project, just to kinda cap it off, so.
Any more questions for Mark? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. With the stipulation of checking out that deed, please.
Liquor licenses, town council acting as a liquor commission. New class B V liquor license for Grand Ventura venue LLC.
We're gonna go one by one?
If you do class by class, I think-
This is, this is a new one, so I think you have to handle that-
For the rest of them, are you gonna go class by class, so?
Move the license.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion on this liquor license? Just come on up, state your name and address for the record.
My address or the, where it's located?
Either, as long as you're representing the company?
Yes, sir.
Just state your name and the address of the business is fine.
Okay, I'm Louis Severino and, uh, my venue is in fifty-three Providence Street in West Waller.
So you're opening up over there as a event venue?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Any questions for anybody else? You have anything for us, anything to add or?
Um, no, I'm just, uh, first time here and, and, uh, it's been a very long process, so I'm just wanna know.
Getting there, huh?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it? Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome to West Waller.
Aye. Approval of the class A liquor license renewals.
Move class A renewals.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
Class B limited renewals.
I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from both of the class Bs.
Class B limited, uh, move approval?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? For class B, any public discussion for limited renewals? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
Class B victular renewals. Before you move on that one, if you can just omit number twenty-four of that section, mega Providence Street doing business as the lounge by Smoke Land, they are not renewing and we have Grand Ventura going in that spot.
And I need to recuse myself from this school.
We're losing a lot of people.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
Welcome back.
Class D club renewals.
Move the club renewals.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it?
Class T renewal.
Move class T renewal.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
And business licenses.
Move the biz, move the business licenses.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion on the business licenses? Hearing none?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So only because it's been brought to us twice already, um, for, oh, zero one, unforgettable events party hall? Have, have we resolved that issue?
Denise was gonna go to the state, if I recall, about the bathrooms.
That's the only issue we've had with it.
Right.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. So I did end up going to the state and, um, they said that they were gonna contact, uh, Bob to see what the problem was because they said that normally when you open up a new business, they just switch it over to the second business. But he said the only way that they would be saying I need a second bathroom is if he switch it to like something else, like a assembly, which he did. So he said he was gonna do some research and get in contact with him, but I'm not sure if that happened yet. But in the meantime, I did, uh, follow up with one of the females that own a same, a hall just like mine. She presented me with her, her occupation, the, the license. I don't know what it's called, but I had sent it, sent it over to Bob and they classified her event hall as a-
Do you wanna come up here too, do you have any?
Is, is she in West Waller?
No, she's in Lincoln.
Yeah, well, that could be different, yeah.
Yeah.
Community room.
Oh, they call it a community room, same thing. I don't know why they, it's just wordage. What is, doesn't matter what they call it, it's what the occupancy is, which is an assembly, which machine is also. There's no dispute that it is an assembly. We know that. It's over fifty people, assembly of people. The eight, eight, they are, they have it as eight-three, I have it as an eight-two.
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Just the way, um, building official classified it as, I really don't know what, how he did that.
What's the difference in classifications though, an A-two versus an A-three?
I can give you this, you can read it, might be easier.
So have you received the, the stuff, you, Denise, you say you sent stuff to Bob?
Yes, so where I sent was the, um, the-
C O.
Yeah, the C O. Um, and showed him that her occupancy is eighty, she only has one bathroom, it's over fifty, so I, I really wasn't sure like what the difference is, is, is how they classify them or, I don't know. It's just so confusing to me that I'm having this problem with this, I mean-
Which one, which one, are you saying A-one, A-two or A-three, which one?
I consider her at A-two.
Based on what you've told us, I would say that's right.
Yeah. And I used one per seventy-five. There's two, there's two classifications in A-two. I used the less stringent one, so she'd have to have less bathrooms. Unfortunately, there's nowhere in the plum- in the, um, plumbing code that has single bathroom male or females in that classification. I did reach out to the Lincoln building official this morning, as she requested. And I spoke to him and he said the C O was made out incorrectly. Him, the fight apartment, did go to that location and found it to be a small venue with less than fifty occupancy. I do not know the layout of Lincoln bit, uh, the Lincoln, there may be structures in there that are unmovable that lower the floor space, the least amount of floor space from assembly to, to re, um, to not have to require two bathrooms would be to change it to a business would be fifty and under, and that would be seven hundred and fifty square feet and under of assembly floor.
So where do we at, where do we at right now? The square footage again?
Seventeen ten for her.
And that was my other thing too, cause they're telling him that the occupancy is, that the O P is wrong, but you know, you know how you have that on the wall? And her place is that easy as well. So it's like, it, it's, it's very complicated to me, like, it's really complicated, but her, her, her square footage is one thousand four hundred and ninety. Mine is one thousand and eight hundred.
It's actually twelve hundred, if you read that.
Actually, I'm not sure we care what a Lincoln facility has, to be honest with you, so I wouldn't spend a lot of time, yes.
I'm trying to compare it, so like you guys can know that, like, I, I just, I just don't get the two bathroom thing.
But if it's something that, that Bob feels strongly about and it's what, what the state code says.
The state, the state hasn't got back to you then, since she spoke to them?
I, um, I mean, I had talked to the state multiple times, um, about this situation.
No, I just know she was, she was seeking, you were gonna try to seek relief from the state.
Yes, I went there last week, Monday.
So they haven't got back since that point?
They took my information, they still haven't called me back, so.
I don't wanna keep delaying this, but I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I feel bad, but I also don't feel comfortable asking the building official to go against the code that we have. Because if we do that, then-
You know, and I've, I've done it as much-
And there is not.
And, you know, I did reach out to, it's, what the Lincoln building official is really irrelevant to West Waller. But as a courtesy, I did reach out to him just to see, you know, how he came up with his occupancy load. He said, excuse me, um, that him and the fight apartment made a, um, a visit to that venue and decided it was less than fifty people.
Is the, the bathroom code is, is, that's not a town, it's, it's a state statute, correct?
Yeah, it's chapter forty-nine of the building.
And there you'd be both be going by the same one, but again, we can't, we can't say why Lincoln did what Lincoln did either.
No, no.
Yeah.
No.
So, and what might be the dumbest question of the evening? I don't know the difference between a water closet and a lavatory, can you explain that?
Bathroom, toilet, sink.
Is a-
Lavatory.
Lavatory. And we're classifying this as an A-two under the restaurants banquet or the nightclub bars?
I used, um, restaurant, but, um, banquet hall.
So-
It was less, less of a load for her to have. If she, if I used the other one, she would need two and two. The way the, um-
What was in this building beforehand for this?
I don't know, I-
A window shop.
Oh, yeah, windows.
I don't know what that means, but, yeah.
They tried to sell windows.
If it's lavatories, it, am I seeing this wrong, it says one for two hundred?
Yeah, but it says male, female up in the top slot.
No, two hundred, two hundred.
Says lavatories and male, female.
Oh, oh, oh.
I mean, a lot of its kind of idea and most of the, the venues are probably just-
Doesn't say unisex.
That's what I was saying, I was gonna say, so some of this verbiage is a little-
You're looking at A-one though. The way, the way you get, the way you come up with your, um, count.
Male, female.
The way they come up with the count for the users chart is the, um, occupancy load divided by two. So if it's a hun- if it's a hundred and, say it's two hundred people, then it would be a hundred and a hundred, hundred male, hundred female.
Restaurants, uh, restaurants go by the same, like, as far as the amount of bathrooms? I do, I know we've never had it come up before, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, restaurants is one per seventy-five.
I think we're in the same places we were at the, at the last meeting. Where you-
Again, and it, it's very unusual, we get to this level of detail here at the council meeting. It's usually we say that, you know, of-
A lot of this is weird, like even like the A-one, I know we're not in A-one, but it says one per hundred and twenty-five for male and one per sixty-five for female. It's very odd, it feels like it's-
Yeah.
I mean, that one with these probably made three thousand years ago, I mean, I feel like it's, some of these are very outdated, some of these things do-
They go a little faster, but, but they have not been modified. They haven't been modified.
No, they probably have not been modified. Nonetheless, as I said, we don't typically get into this level of detail at the council. But clearly, we do say we, we approve things subject to, and if the building inspector is not comfortable that the applicant has met the requirements, I, I'm not, certainly not gonna say that we should go against them. I, I feel, I, I, I wouldn't do that anyway.
I think right of- The point where either you have to put another bathroom in or we get resolution from the state, which is the same point where our two, we were two weeks ago.
Right.
So it's up to you, and it might be faster to put another bathroom in at this point. Obviously a lot more expensive, but-
We spoke about that different, I made some suggestions to help her out, but it just wasn't feasible for, I guess, for it to happen.
Yeah.
And also a variance through the state. I'm not saying that it would do it. If they gave her variance, I could accept that.
And that's, was your position last time as well, so, yeah.
But either way, that's their decision, not ours though.
Please?
It's, that's their decision, not ours.
So if the state comes to you and says-
If the state gave, yeah, if she went to the state, they gave her a variance.
It'll be in your records and that'll be done.
Be my records and I would sign off and hot be.
So we're, we're not meeting for three weeks, right?
Four, so, you know.
I, the way I feel personally, if you get the variance from the state and you accept it, I would have no problem with you opening.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, that's why, if we, I mean, I think if we approved it-
Pending.
Pending, if this gets approval, at least it would save her time again, we're not, we're only approving it if the state offers this variance, I mean-
Or a bathroom gets put in. Or, or she complies with the bathroom.
Or bathroom, which that wouldn't happen in three weeks.
I'm only saying that because we're four weeks out now, four, three and a half weeks out and it's not another two-week meeting, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
But that would have to be in writing from the state.
Oh, yeah, it'd happen.
And Bob to the manager and the manager to us, however that-
Yeah.
The hierarchy is gonna work, but-
Yeah, I mean, and, and maybe it'll help you if you tell them that you're approved pending this variance and if you don't get the variance, then you have to put another bathroom, I guess.
Is that okay to do?
You can approve it, but again, you're gonna have to stay on top of it. So if you're going to approve it, I would suggest that you put it on the calendar, uh, for November twelfth.
Yeah, so we can approve it.
Make sure, Bob, Bob can report back, I don't think-
We can put it up for pending approval.
To keep coming. That's what I'm just saying, just so you have to keep coming. If, if Bob gets, um, notification from the state that whatever relief she's seeking has been approved versus the building, then she, then he can, um, fulfill and the clerk can fulfill the, uh, the council's gonna do tonight.
At this point, it's just simple, pending C O. Once a certificate of occupancy comes up in the past.
No, not C O.
No.
In order for my office to issue a license, the, I have to sign off.
On everything.
Yep.
Listen, we just, we just did that.
And last meeting, you said everything with, everything with fire was, was good as well, right?
So if that were to happen within the next four weeks, before our next meeting, it just, you would go to Sarah, could you just let us know, that way it's-
Yeah, once it's signed off.
Put it on the agenda and then if it's happened, then we can just-
Yeah, I mean, the reality is all those licenses we just approved are subject to-
Right.
All of those approvals as well. I think this is different because Denise brought it to us, I think, looking for us to maybe provide a variance and, and I don't-
Right.
There was no appetite for the council to do that. So that's why this one's a little different, but.
They said it was six weeks ago that we proved it pending all approvals, but-
But, but, but a lot of them aren't pending a possible construction project.
We don't, we don't know, we just don't, we, this one got brought to our attention a lot, I mean, we don't really know any of the other situations.
That's correct.
If everyone that's involved doesn't sign off, the clerk can't issue the license. That's the bottom line.
Right.
I'll, I'll use a perfect example, fifty-three Providence Street's been, we gave them a license three years ago, a business license three years ago. They never opened. They never even got the, that far, they, they've done work in there.
The gentleman that was here earlier, yeah.
Not the gentleman that was here earlier, the one-
Yeah, the Smoke Land.
On here, number Smoke Land twenty-four.
Gotcha, okay.
We approved that license and actually the, the building owner had problems the last three years with them. And, but again, they've never opened because nothing was ever signed off. Fire went in and did their inspections, gave their, um, approval for occupancy, so on and so forth, but they still never opened, so we approved it. So that's, that's a perfect example. We had to wait for everything to get approved when it was dock work, hoods.
They never complied.
Yeah, there was, there was hoods, there was all sorts of things that we talked about.
Yeah, they were never in compliance.
We approved it, never came forth, so.
I have no problem with that.
Any public comment on this?
So the motion is to approve all of these pending.
Pending.
Pending. Subject to all approvals.
Tax assessor.
Yes.
A tax collector, I mean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? You're halfway there, now you just gotta get to the final finish point, right?
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And just for the record, unforgettable events, party hall, Grand Ventura venue, uh, St. Anthony's Church, Rhode Island Parrot Rescue, all donation bin licenses, all pawn broker licenses have been approved.
New business, approval of tax abatements in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents as requested by the tax factor.
Move approval of tax abatement.
Second.
In seconded. Rose, you wanna just come up and give a brief?
Good evening.
Hi, Rose.
Hi, Rose.
This is the last of it, it's the motor vehicles two thousand ten through two thousand thirteen. And then now fourteen through twenty-one, we'll go to the debt collection company to see if we can get what we can. But this is, we cleaned up everything, all the old receivables, so this is the last.
It was a lot of work, so thank you for doing that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any questions for Rose? Thank you, Rose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Approval of sale of surplus vehicles on gov deals.
Move approval of the sale of surplus vehicles?
Second.
Moving second.
There's a memo attached, the fleet maintenance supervisor's looking to put two pieces of D P W property on the gov deals site, a two thousand and five Ford E-two-fifty van and a two thousand and two Freightliner M T forty-five box van.
Any questions for Mark? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
School building committee update.
Who wants to give that update?
I'll take care of it. On this tomorrow, um, we have our regularly scheduled meeting where we anticipate talking more and learning more about the potential options, um, that would hopefully resolve some of the needs identified in our phase one report. More importantly, uh, scheduled on October twenty-third at six P M at the West Walk High School Auditorium will be the second of our, the community engagement nights. That'll be a public forum and presentation by Tecton and Left Field and, and our committee. And we anticipate the ability to be able to show the viable options available to date that again, will address the needs identified in our phase one report, um, which could include renovations and new buildings. So we're hoping to reveal some of that at that community engagement on October twenty-third at six P M.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Encampment response team update and homelessness task force creation.
I'm gonna defer to Chief Verona on the encampment response team. They just went out again last week, he can share their observations.
Good evening, God bless.
Chief.
Chief. So last Thursday, um, members from Thrive Behavioral Health, the Health Equity Zone, uh, were met with the, uh, wound care group, uh, Community Paramedicine, West Walk Police, and we went out to all the encampments and took account. The first week we went out, we went out at six o'clock in the morning and we met a lot of, um, individuals out there. This week, we went out at eight o'clock and there was a noticeably less people at the encampments at eight o'clock. Many of them were at work. So the total population appears to have decreased by about five. The, um, seven-year-old with her forty-seven-year-old son found housing, uh, housing was found for them. I believe that Thrive and the heads were instrumental in, in getting them into housing. One or two, um, were in detox and another one was incarcerated. So, uh, in going around to the encampments- So in going around to the encampments, we noticed many of them were a lot cleaner. They were raking, they were picking the garbage up. DPW had put a dumpster down, and, you know, there was a noticeable improvement in several of the camps. Not all of the camps, but in several of the camps, there was a noticeable improvement. I went through and highlighted, I'll email this out to you, that we had about one, two, three, four, five, six of the encampments that were vacated or abandoned, and then two new ones popped up. Okay? So this is the type of, this is fairly normal, you know, that the encampments are left and then another one is started. So we looked at cleaning up a couple of the encampments that were abandoned. And that's pretty much where we are right now with that. I don't know if I mentioned any of today's-
The next time you'll plan to go out, Chief?
We'll go out a week from Thursday. So we wanna go out every other week, and we'll see, we'll probably try to go out earlier this time, try and catch more people. And just to have, to have those contacts, because we didn't give out as much knock-in, you know, there wasn't as much interaction at that time.
So it's gonna be every, every other Thursday?
Every other Thursday, so.
And obviously, we'll, we'll increase that as needed, based on observations and their findings from the previous visit. But if you want to stay up for a few minutes, obviously, the, the talk of an ordinance of various design has spurred a lot of activity and conversation. That also kinda came along with the release of an updated report from the city of One Socket. So part of it is where regardless of ordinance formation, the town is still gonna be an active participant in trying to resolve the many issues that face both the, the community and the unhoused. So there, we've talked about possibly the creation of a homelessness task force. I'll defer to you all on how formal you want to make it. The city of One Socket made it formal, I think their group is up into the almost two dozen active participants. But that also causes some slowness. They've seemed to perfect it, and great for them, they, they've had some positive results. Another alternative is more or less an active working group to work with our internal folks, to bring in the other community partnership and, and people that have some valuable guidance to offer and some solutions to, to come up with the best product. So we met with a small group of community partners, partners at the end of, of last week, and reviewed a presentation that was given, given to the council back in 2021, which I had hoped to share at some point today, but a, a family matter prevented that, but I'll get it out to you soon. And it more or less talks about the affordable housing units. This is back then, we should be looking towards affordable housing use and expanding housing, which obviously we've done. I forget how many hundreds are in the pipeline. I tried to get Marilyn right before the meeting to get an updated number. But just between Washington Street and Lipit Mill, two that would hopefully, hopefully be available within a year's time, we're well on our way, plus numerous other affordable, various levels of affordable and market rate housing that's in, in that pipeline. We also talked about the emergency shelter setup. To date, we've only done it on nights where it's either extremely cold or a big event or a hazard event. I think four or five that we did over the winter last year that funded mostly by the Department of Housing grants. So we're gonna continue to do that again this year, but we'd like to keep looking to do more, because we need to be a partner, and we have the commitment of our partners, as the chief mentioned, that when we go out for our encampment response, the housing placement teams, the mental health and physical health people, the nutrition people, that try to make sure that we're kind of put our best foot forward in coming up with hopefully a lasting solution. We're not gonna cure it all. Obviously, there are some people that would, that are hesitant or will not accept any assistance, but we wanna be in a position to be able to guide people that want it and, and need it. Today, Council Vice President and Chief Verone and I met with the One Socket mayor and their human service, human services director, and reviewed their, what they've been doing and their updated report that was sent to all of you, and reviewed the similarities between One Socket and Westwalk, of which there, there are many. They're just further north. They have a few, probably, I think they estimated two dozen at least more encampment residents, perhaps even a little more. But obviously, a river-based community, mill-based, primarily blue collar with a railroad line that runs through it. But then they also utilize their community partnerships with Thunder Mist, Landmark Medical, Community Care Alliance. And one thing that they spoke a lot about was their current and hopeful increasing relationship with the diocese of Providence. They have many diocese properties that are not being used, and they have one in particular that they're, that they're looking at trying to expand their offerings. And the funding sources that they're using for their plans mostly consist of CDBG funds, a significant amount of local donations, mostly businesses that have been affected, their areas have been affected, city appropriations and state aids and grants, which obviously we want to partake in as well. So essentially, you know, we're gonna, unless directed otherwise, continue with our efforts with an in-house homelessness task force, pulling in the appropriate people when they're identified, those that are interested, and to continue working on the short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals. And if desired, obviously, we're gonna keep going with the encampment response team as well. And if we need to pair that with the continued review of a potential ordinance, we will continue to do that as well.
Say that last part again?
The ordinance is still an option on the table. I mean, we had the first draft of the one that the solicitor put together. Obviously, we received a lot of feedback on that with pros and, and cons. My personal opinion is if we were, if you were deciding to go an ordinance route, something more simple and direct to the issue, at issues at hand, would be more appropriate. I know there's one that was been sent around from a few other communities. We'll be, continue to look into that and modify one for discussion as we move through the task force process.
So when are we gonna have that simplified ordinance before this council?
You can, you can have it for discussion at any time.
Well, I think it's been a big discussion the last two meetings. So, we don't have one here before us tonight, because we know there's still a lot of wording to be corrected, but-
Right, so that-
Sitting here next year asking where the ordinance is.
So an ordinance can come before you at any time. We, we simplified it, it can be for discussion. We just felt the collective group working that the initial proposal had enough issues, if you will, that it just made more sense, I don't wanna say to start from scratch, but to give it a little more thought and give it the right amount of time and discussion to put something credible before you.
We have two meetings in November, it's the 12th and 26th, is that what it is?
I think it's the 19th, isn't it?
Back to back.
But back-to-back weeks, for the best.
I mean, I think the discussion here on the, here in this chamber on the last meeting regarding the ordinance before us is, that quite honestly, it was quite cumbersome. There was some feedback from the ACLU, I know you had some conversations with Stephen Brown, that I believe something more simplified would be better thing if we feel the need to do that. When Socket today talked about how they, they're still struggling with what their ordinance should look like, they don't have an ordinance or a resolution. They had an approach previously, the ma, the current mayor has been in his position since last November. And the, the previous administration took more of a heavy-handed approach. And what they found was that it didn't solve the problem. And I think we've all agreed that the root cause of the problem is people are unhoused and getting to that. And as Mark said, and I, I was embarrassed to say, I don't remember the presentation to the council back in 2021. But there are some slides that were provided to us last Friday that we could go over. And the approach needs to be a short-term, medium-term, long-term. Long-term, we're sort of working that way with places like 183 Washington and Lipit Mill that are affordable housing. One thing that I do wanna point out, when you said that you went out a little later, you went out because those people were working. So, you know, the conception is, misconception is that that none of the people in the encampments do work, and, and that's not necessarily true, so.
Yeah, a number was thrown out, I don't know how accurate, but 60% was thrown out today in our meeting.
So.
The 60% are employed?
Yes.
So, so-
That's, I, that would've surprised me, that's much higher than I would've thought, too.
So much like the issue itself, I, I don't think there's a single solution to this. But what I do like is the fact that I, I seem to feel like there's some traction that we've been getting since, and I'll, I'll put it this way, since we started talking about an ordinance, right? So we've got two pieces. We've got, and as you said, Mr. Manager, a commitment, a renewed commitment by some folks to make sure that this problem doesn't get pushed aside. But the other piece is an accountability piece, and I think that's where the ordinance comes in. And I think, you know, whether the ordinance, and I, and I agree with, you know, the, the first stab at the ordinance, we were trying to, to, to gauge where it would fall. But I think it really needs to continue, whether it's a simplified ordinance or not, it's, it's really a, a multi-piece solution. So I think having an ordinance in place really does hold all of our collective feet to the fire and make sure that we, we continue to work on this issue and not let it go to the back burner. So I'm interested in seeing some sort of ordinance in place. You know, I, I don't know if we're gonna make that timeline that we originally-
We won't, not at, not at that date, because even if we did the 12th and 19th, you still have to wait 20 days before an ordinance is, is made, which would bring us to like December 10th. I think the two important things about the ordinance, would need to be something that's enforceable, and not just something that's just a paper ordinance that we can't enforce. And then also something that's not gonna get a suit from the ACLU.
Well, I could do a simple ordinance right now. Follow the damn laws that are in place right now in our law books, and no encampments. That's a simple ordinance. Doesn't, not, not homeless encampments, no encampments. Simple ordinance. I mean, in our laws, I mean, you said it from day one.
Mr. President, if I may-
Follow our laws, and we wanna be in this predicament.
Right now, again, and this goes back to the Pulaski Street days. You have ordinances and laws that talk about trespass, and you have, excuse me, laws and ordinance that talk about behavior. My opinion, what you received as far as the initial ordinance, the initial draft, was all the way as far, as far as you could go, saying this is what you're gonna do. But if you read that, regardless of the tax by the ACLU, regardless of the tax, if people didn't like it, there was nothing in there that was not the opinion of this council, the fact that you respect the homeless rights, rights of the homelessness, but also all of the laws that were listed weren't done just for show and tell. It was there because those are the existing laws right now. The ACLU did not object or cite that those laws that are on the books right now are unconstitutional. So theoretically, I'm sorry, President's correct, you don't need an ordinance, you already have them. But if you wanna put something together, everyone's going to attack it, because one group's not gonna like A, one group's not gonna like B, one group's not gonna like C. So right now, as it stands, I think the Westwalk Police Department's doing a great job when crimes are reported or when activities are reported as to what's going on in the encampments. Chief has said that several, not all, are showing improvement by the way they look. And again, if the task force or the, the group that's going out along with the police with their new beats are now starting to put more, I don't wanna say pressure, but there's just knowledge within the community about what's going on. Again, you already have the laws in place. The ordinance are already in place as to what this town can do as a municipal government. So, I mean, we could, I could put an ordinance together, but again, you'll have the same response of the pro and con as to, again, you guys have looked at, all right, what else would you wanna change that's in that existing ordinance right now? Perhaps some of the words.
Some of the words. I, I, I think it wants to be encampment-focused, not homeless-focused.
That's, that's fine, but you still, you still want the same results.
Right. One of the things I wanna make perfectly clear is as long as we have the law on our side, I will never govern based on the ACLU's opinion, because I couldn't care less about their opinion.
Well, again, you've got existing ordinances, you've got existing laws. Put them to work, when people make complaints about what may or may not be happening in the encampments or around the encampments to taxpayers and citizens of the town of Westwalk, the police department is there to enforce the law. I mean, it's, it's clear, I mean, trespass is pretty clear, if they're on town property, you can arrest them for trespass. Now, I don't wanna get into a long discussion about what's gonna happen after the fact, but, I mean, those laws are already there.
We, we, we've been through that, we all, it's been laid out pretty, pretty clearly to all of us what happens after that. But again, I, I think we have traction, we, there's movement, which is what we really want, right? We don't want this to be a, a head-butting situation every time we, we run across something like this. We just, we want the problem to be solved, it's just not gonna be solved by one thing, it's gonna take a, a number, a, a number of things to-
And it's gonna be ongoing.
It's gonna be ongoing.
Mark, can you, I, I've looked at this and tried to look at what you presented in detail, and probably way overthinking it. But can you send us what you have as far as a simplified ordinance that you were talking about?
The simplified one, I think the council president may have distributed a few weeks ago, is the example from the city of Fall River.
Yeah, all right, okay, that, that's the same thing that you're-
It's essentially, and I have one other community that's very similar, that just did a nice job with definitions.
Okay. And I just have one question, we've been talking about this to death for a long time. And I know you just talked about the misconception. Why hasn't all that come forward before about, you know, people, you know, you don't, whether you have 10 people out there or 200 people out there, it's, they're not, I, I understand, not everybody's a drug addict, not everybody's a drunk, not everybody's a, a non-worker. But we've been talking about this, and I don't, and I'm not, I'm looking at you because you're right here, but, but how come nobody has stepped up and, and defended that?
Oh, I, I think it has, I think it has been defended. We might not wanna have heard it, but I think it has been defended, yeah.
I must've missed that, but.
I, I mean-
A knowledge is power, I get it, you know?
Absolutely, it is.
If you, again, you sent us the thing from Fall River, if there's any differences in that, if you could just send it, please send it again.
And tailor it, yeah. I, I, the biggest problem I have is criminalizing the encampments.
I think we've all said that.
Well, but, but that was what was gonna happen if we passed the ordinance as presented.
Correct, and even the Fall River one, I said-
Does not, that's correct.
But also, it wasn't, wasn't saying copy it word for word or verbatim, or take, I, I gave a ordinance that was written pretty good that could've been-
Simple, one page, one and a half page.
I mean, that's-
But I think, I think the, the, as you say, Mark, there is traction. And people, and I would love to get more people involved. And one thing that came out loud and clear in the meeting in One Socket today is we, we, the state has to be involved in this. I mean, the state clearly has to be involved in this.
I know, I've reached out to our reps and senators, at least two. And the question they gave me was, where'd the $4 million that the state budgeted last year go for, in the budget? for, in the budget as far as building homeless shelters?
Why are they asking you that? They're from the state. I mean, yes.
But again.
They, they should know the incentive that. We should ask them that.
And they keep asking. They keep asking.
Well.
Because they're catching the heat also. They're, they're catching it from constituents. They're catching it from me.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if you have talked to anybody, but I know I constantly ask and I say, okay, what are we doing in the state level? You know, Vin, he's not here tonight, but he and I had a long conversation today. You know, he's putting pressure on the state. What's going on in the state? You know, and I, I let, I let the state reps know that we'll be writing a resolution saying that we need to, you know, get the state more involved in this. You cannot put it on every city and town in this, in the state to put this up and make it a burden on us.
If you look at the, if you look at the plan that was presented and the report provided by the City of Wind Socket, it references the City of Houston, Texas. City of Houston, Texas is bigger than the state of Rhode Island.
Right.
So we should be able as a state to come up with a solution. To expect West Waller to do their own thing and Coventry to do their own thing and Wind Socket, it, it's just, that's ludicrous. We'll have 39 different answers. So that's the other big piece going forward.
I agree with everything you just said, but the problem is the state is leaving us, and by us, I mean every municipality to figure this out by themselves. So until they're willing to step up and, and do their part, we have to do our part to make sure that we're doing whatever we can.
It's amazing that the state will take away our zoning and planning laws, but they don't want to help us with the homeless. That's, that's a shame.
There you go.
And, and, you know, no offense with the animal lovers, but I've seen more on the news lately about homeless cats than I've seen about homeless people.
So I, I do believe there's traction. I do believe we the, the rounds that are being made every two weeks are important. I think that they need to continue. We need a place when we go and tell people and give them a heads up that, hey, listen, you're gonna have to move. Without having a place for them to go, I, I struggle with having that eat it go out there. I, I just, I really do. Because, and what Wind Socket said was, yeah, they move and they move again, and that, that's their experience as to what's happened, what happened. So I don't think it's gonna be any different in West Waller. They do like to make sure and they do check out, you know, what are the, what are your, what's your attachment to Wind Socket? And we've talked about how a lot of people here in West Waller that are unhoused do have either family or some attachment or grew up here to West Waller. So they, they're suffering from many of the same things that we are. One thing the mayor did say is, yes, I'm willing to take a stepped approach to it. But I think what he said, and you guys can correct me, is something like, but don't make a fool of me, because if you make a fool of me, then we're gonna go the other way. So he's trying to be compassionate. He's trying to do, he has put dumpsters. He's actually put porta-johns out in various encampment areas. So again, we can't solve this on our own. We need help, and I agree that we just need to continue to, maybe we should pitch our tents on the State House steps and see how that works and see if that, if that works for us. But we need to continue to apply some pressure there as well. And I, I think going out, and I actually would like to make the rounds next time with you and, and.
Yep, a week from Thursday, I'll, I'll let you know. But the, the real credit, like, the people who are going out there daily, you know, and having the contacts, those are the people that are making a difference, so.
So we know who's out there. We know what services they need. We're trying to sign them up. We, I'm not doing a thing, but the people that are going out and doing that, we're the Wendy's of the world.
What's different about what we're doing compared to what this homelessness task, I mean, we're already doing a lot of the things that they're probably already gonna be doing, right?
That's just what we walked out of the meeting saying that, you know, we don't have an official fancy report, but we are doing a lot of the things that they have done. They've been doing it for quite a bit longer. They actually did clear out some encampments that were in the center of town. And they moved. Again, they're, they're under bridges and on highways. We don't have that kind of setup. They're seven square miles. We're eight square miles. They have, they do have a lot of commercial business and businesses. And those, those people in the community have actually chipped in to help defray the cost, because I said, what do you, what's your answer when they say, oh, we're spending taxpayer money? A lot of it is donations. They gave us some names of some organizations that might help in that regard as well, so.
I just have a question. So you're going out in two weeks. And I'm not trying, I'm not saying don't do it, but what do you, what is going to be different in two weeks than there is right now? Like each time you go out, like what is, what is the goal to go out?
Well, we're, we're keeping them informed on what we're doing here. Most importantly, you know, um, they got that December 2nd date, and now we know that's probably gonna be moved down a little bit, but and keeping them apprised of, of that is one. We're keeping account. And seeing who, who is actually out there. You know, and we did learn a couple of people to get housed and, actually, I, I I think two people had missed court appointments that the West Waller Police were able to help get to court. And one of the things, like, when someone goes to work, it's, it's not noticeable when somebody makes a scene or does something bad. That's why, that's what you hear, you know? The people who are, you know, doing the right thing, it's not news or it's not noteworthy. You know?
Jay, Jay, you, you said that right along, Jason. You know, it's the behavior that is the problem. And, and if we were to do that behavior, whether it's the street you live on or the street you live on, there would be consequences for us and there should be consequences for those people as well, so.
I have a question for the chief and Mark. Thank you for the update.
Thanks.
We say avenue construction update.
We'll save that.
Yeah, public comments coming up.
I put this on the agenda only because season's coming to an end, hearing a lot of rumblings. So I spoke with the superintendent. So first of all, we get weekly updates from Boil and Fogarty. There's, no, you know, there's, there's 20, there's 20 of us on, we, so a big meeting occurred back in the spring.
Right.
It, it affects mostly Ward Four and Five, so we're on that, that email with, with 20-something other people that manage the police department. But, um, so it just gives a report of where we'll be working each day, what we'll be doing throughout each week. And as you know, there's, there's different sections that are going on now with the Tyoka Avenue near the Turnpike and the section at Walgreens and the, the rest of Coeset Avenue, which are really three different projects by the, with the water company. So I spoke with the direct, with Director Dave Simmons on Friday. And the plan is to work and finish, sorry, not finish. The plan is to work until Thanksgiving. I'm looking at the big portion of Coeset Avenue now from Coeset End to, to Route Two. I know David told me they, they, they're on, we're on schedule. Couple of days behind based on when they're working in the ground. They've had some issues. Otherwise, he's very optimistic that by Thanksgiving, we'll all be put to bed and allowing the road to settle. So, which I know nobody wants to hear, but that's the right thing to do. It's, it stinks. But, um, and we know everybody has spoken about the poor condition that Coeset Avenue was left last, last fall and winter. I really don't think that that's going to happen again. I know Boil and Fogarty got ripped apart from it. But, uh, so that will happen through Thanksgiving and then the road will settle. And it'll be a roughly two to three-week period where the paving's going to take place next spring.
So from Coeset to Route Three, they've just reclaimed. That's, that's gonna be putting a finished product on that?
That I don't know.
Cause.
That's like a.
Mark may be able to give some more information. I, I just talked, I'm just really more concerned with Coeset. Coeset Avenue itself.
Well, it's Coeset to Route, from Coeset End to Route Three.
Right.
Yeah.
They reclaimed all of it with the big machine, because they parked that in a private property this weekend. But that's gonna be the finished product.
From Tyoka to Coit Avenue, they're gonna put the final paving down for the rest of this week and possibly the beginning of next. They will be finished raising the structures to the right level. And they'll be doing all that. That'll be done. As the councilman Pachardi said, from Coit Avenue to Route Two, they're doing now the service laterals off the main pipe. Now that that's all they'll be doing, you know, all the perpendicular connections. But they vow to continue to do that as alternating traffic. And again, once they're done for the season, they said they will do, just like they did just a few months ago, they'll do a better full-depth patch job to get us through the winter and then to allow the appropriate settling. I think they usually call for two to three months. And then in the spring, they'll come back and do the final paving.
And I assume they'll be on call for us when, when that big pothole shows up, but, yeah.
So it's gonna be a, a patch for Coit to Route Two.
But it'll be, it'll be the quality of the second time they did it.
Right.
All right, yeah.
So it's not gonna be, it's not gonna match from Coit down to Walgreens as it sits today. They're not gonna mill it.
Because it'll be curb-to-curb
Yeah.
on that section.
Yeah.
I'm just a little slow on Coeset Avenue.
No.
I don't think you have a choice right now.
No.
When we, when it's done, we'll get calls that they're speeding and we need.
It, it's.
We won't.
And, and are they.
Calls when it's done and it looks good.
And are they confident that all they need to do is actually final paving next spring?
Yes.
They are.
Pretty much, yeah. Which should be spring of 2025. That's what the end goal was.
Yeah.
Late spring.
Yeah, when we met last spring, that was, that was the plan.
Because I thought the DOT had kind of told them they had to get it buttoned up by the end of this year.
Right, but so when I talk with Dave, it, it's, it's very difficult because you're working with different agencies. You have, you have Kent County Water, Boil and Fogarty, the DOT. And then everybody has their opinion, and then we take the brunt of it, even though it's not our project. So when we met, I mean, everybody was on the same page. And you just have to let it time to, have time to settle.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it doesn't, I wish it would be done now, but I think everybody wants the project done.
Yeah.
You know, there's no, there's no question about that. But we're at this point where like, we're at the homeless stretch, do it the right way.
We're halfway there, right? It's half the roads and be, yeah.
Yeah.
More than half.
You know, we just, we can't allow, not that we have anything to do with it, but we just don't want Coit to Route Two to go through the winter as it sits now. Because that's completely unacceptable.
There'll be conversations had, you know, to make sure that doesn't happen.
Right. Because it's unacceptable as it sits. Never mind when we start getting freeze thaw, freeze thaw. And then it starts getting torn up.
Secondly, I, I know Mark, Mark, I know, got an email over the weekend. I got phone calls. If we could just make sure that they get permission to park their vehicles and their machinery on people's property, that would be huge, because again, people think it's our project.
Right.
Yeah. Reach out to us. I got it from three different individuals from the board. And, and I, I know they left an oil slick in the, the parking lot there, too, at the Station Memorial. And they kind of swept it off to the side. So I sent the pictures to Jeff. I know Jeff's gonna work with them and get cleaned up, but just so, make sure they get permission to park on people's property, because I, I, I mean, you're getting calls at five, six, seven, eight o'clock.
On any property, they should be getting, especially there should be extra care in that specific property to.
I would agree with that.
Thank you, Jay.
Proclamation celebrating extra mile day on November 1st, 2024.
Move the proclamation, I guess. I don't know if that's. Is this new? Do we do this every year?
I think we've done it a couple of years, yeah.
I know in November, don't we do small business?
Do that one. That'll be next meeting.
But we're gonna miss it?
No, that'll be.
Small business Saturday is the 29th this year, 28th.
Okay.
Yeah, Thanksgiving's late.
So, yeah, we won't miss it. It'll be on the 12th.
And I'm all for. Go the extra mile, personal effort, volunteerism and service.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it.
Upcoming appointments. Sewer use board review appointment to fill a vacancy as an Alchip member for a three-year term. Sewer use board review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax assessment board review appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee. Tree warden. Recreation committee. Westwork 250th Commission. Protectit River Authority appointment to fill a vacancy for unexpired term ending June 2026. Westwork Housing Authority appointment or reappointment for five-year term. Antarctic Redevelopment Commission appointment or reappointment for a five-year term. Public forum.
Public comment. Anybody have any public comments?
Derek Reed, 60 minutes out. I'm still at work. I'm disappointed to stand here tonight and hear that December 2nd is not gonna happen. Uh, it seems like it's business as usual in West Waller. Again, we're gonna kick the can down the road until it stops. At the end of the day, we're still need to recognize that we're got a serious problem where kids play. Where families do family functions. And to keep kicking it down the road because, oh, well, they're cleaning up and they're doing the right thing. It's not gonna last forever. And I feel like we're gonna make it okay that they stay there because they're gonna clean up and they're gonna go to work and they're gonna do this and they're gonna do that. Listen, they gotta move. You know, where are they gonna go? I don't know. Maybe they want to climb the hill, go up on top of Wake Hill Street. I don't know. But I mean, the, the leaves are coming off the trees. We're starting to be able to see them from our property. I've called numerous times for fires. I mean, it's just, it's just crazy. And to come here tonight and hear you guys say, well, you know, you know, the, the the solution is coming and we got this and we got that. Where's, where have these two groups of people been for the last five or six years? All of a sudden, we're gonna put something together. We're gonna make a miracle happen. It's not gonna happen. And at the end of the day, I can hear David's voice. He's aggravated. At the end of the day, it's public space being invaded. It's places kids can't go and fish anymore. It's places where kids can't ride their bikes no more. But it's okay to go there, live there. It's okay to do what they do there. We have signs. I'll say it again. We have signs at River Point after dark. It'll be out or it's trespassing. But it's okay after dark to trespass on the river wall. Apparently. So, you know, this council needs to pay attention. You know, let's not, let's, let's forget about the whole, let's feel bad. Okay, because I don't feel bad no more. We hired one and he didn't make it one week. He made it 12 hours. The first day, he left it after four hours. The second day, he didn't come to work. He didn't call. I had to call Wendy, like she's the employment agent. Third day, he shows up. Ready to go. I took him to Smithfield, so he couldn't walk away. Quite honestly. Let him work a full day. Haven't heard from him since. Heard from him on Sunday. Oh, I don't know. He's like, it's hard to get out of bed. It's hard to get off the ground. Buddy, you're not gonna get off the ground unless you work for it. So I don't feel bad no more. It doesn't matter. The, the fact was made. He was sat here. He preached how good he was. We gave him an offer. He took it. He failed.
Derek, address the council, please.
So I'm all done feeling bad. That was a perfect example. He had a perfect opportunity. Started him at a great rate. Not here to talk about it, but I'll be sure to pay him for 12 hours of work. So I don't feel bad. Well, then leaves fall off the trees, the camouflage is gone. I'm gonna be up here every week when I gotta look at tents and look at fires and call because there's fires and call because my lot's full of smoke. Done with it. But this council wants to keep kicking the can, kicking the can, just like we do all the things. We just kick the can until everybody goes away and then everything's fine. I'm not doing it no more. I can see it from where I do work.
Just come up, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Larry. 297 Washington Street, West Waller. I want to thank you for the dumpsters and the bags and barrels. That guy was from Texas. He ain't from West Waller. I don't know. I worked with Guatemala with blood, maggots. I did work that Americans don't do. I, and I'm homeless. And I, I worked hard on boats and I'm a woman. I went around today and I gave, I fed them today. I'm from Grace Church, Washington Street in West Waller. Every Tuesday I feed them. After church and Sunday we feed them, but they have another place on Sunday and Sunday to go. Um, I left them with toilet paper bags. Um, we give jackets, socks, underwear, scarves, hats, gloves, shoes. Um, I left them with toilet paper bags. Um, we give jackets, socks, underwear, scarves, hats, gloves, shoes. So um, Grace Church takes good care of them also. Um, I think by having more. Um, companies and um, like churches and stuff involved with them. Um, I think it helps a lot. Um, they have responsibility, like sixty percent working, that's great. Now, everybody was putting them down saying, oh, they're bums. Um, not all of them bums, not all of them take drugs. I don't take drugs. I'm homeless and I'm sixty-two with disabled, I'm disabled. I would never, I I don't go that way. Not all of them doing like, chief said, nope. That was down too. I mean, I think more people in the community to get involved, I think it's going to s- less and less homeless. I really believe in that. Um. I just want to make sure, um, state your names to anyone to say. Just a little nervous tonight. I don't know why. Yeah, like I was saying, every Tuesday I feed the, uh, Grace Church feeds them. The second and fourth day from reaching the harvest, they feed them and Saturday and Sunday help the homeless feed them. So, I mean, we are trying. We really are, and I'm hoping it stops the homeless. But this looks like it's never going to end unless the community gets involved. And I mean, every business of the community gets involved. We don't know. It may be a miracle. It it happens or it's just one third of it. Hopefully, it it does end.
What would you like the businesses to do, though? Like, what is yours?
We we would like the businesses, um, given like we do, like Grace Church. Um, help with funds so we can feed them and get them out where they want to go for jobs, if they get the uniform. Or or any clothing that they need to get the job. And then after that. Maybe they can get a house that they can afford, hopefully if the rents went down, you know, but. It's the big thing about clothing. If they don't have the right clothing and they don't have any clothes, shoes or socks, mostly socks, because that's a big thing. If they don't have the right clothing. Or the boots to go to the, like a construction job, they can't do it. They don't have them, they don't have the clothing to get it, that job. So that would be wonderful. We can get funds for money for, or just clothing like we do. We clothe them as well as feeding them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Eyes have it.